Come, shalom akim. I want to give all praise, honor and glory to Yahweh, Baha Shem, Yahweh Shai, Baha Shem Raka Qodash. Double honors to the elder apostles of great millstone who teach him real well. And shalom to the sincere akims, prince truth and sincerity. Shalom. This video, I want to go over this um, this, this short article. Um, which the topic is basically going into, you know, the white people. Uh, you know, just let me say it differently. The so-called white people were actually red. Uh, because there are different shades of red. You can see this in the way, um, when they sit in the sun for too long, when they perform exercise, when it's cold. You know, their, their body turns red, especially their face, their nose, their ears. You know, and, and it goes into how, you know, this mother is accusing the school board. You know, for teaching her daughter that she was born evil because she's white. Well, let me first, first and foremost, start off by saying that not all people that look like so-called white people. You know, are in fact Edomites. You know, um. Um, because through intermingling with the other nations. Um, you know, there are also people that, you know, might look like Esau Edom. You know, who look like so-called white people. But whose lineage does go back to one of the other nations. Or, um, if you look like me and you understand this truth. You know, um, there's a possibility that you might be an Israelite. You see, because the curses that came upon us as a nation, which we can read in, um. Which we can read in, um, Deuteronomy chapter twenty-eight. It says, Deuteronomy chapter twenty-eight and verse fifteen. But it should come to pass, if thou would not hearken to the voice of the Lord Yahweh with thy power. To observe through all his commandments and his statutes, which I commanded his day. That all these curses shall come upon thee and overtake thee. So we as the nation of Israel, if we would have listened to the words of the heavenly father. You know, his laws, statutes and commandments. We as a nation would have been on top of all these other nations. Right now, we can see that Esau Edom, the so-called white man upon the earth is ruling. You know, through the scriptures, you know, I want to bring this information out as well. Um, but before we're going to continue on, I want to show you that. You know, there are people that look like so-called white people. Whose lineage might go back, you know, to the nation of Israel, which in those, in this day and age, you know, in two thousand twenty-one. Israelites are the so-called Negroes, Latinos and Native Americans. But also those that were scattered among the Eden nations that might look like the Eden nations. But his lineage does go back to Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, according to their father's seed line. So if we would have listened to the words of Yahweh Bashem Yahweh Shai, you know, we would, we would have been on top. You know, but we can see that this is not the case. And Deuteronomy chapter twenty-eight, verse fifteen explains us that certain curses will come upon us. As a nation, if you would not listen. If you go into this chapter, you can see that these curses really pertain, you know, to the so-called Negro, Latinos and Native Americans. You see, if you jump down to verse sixty-four. It says, and the Lord Yahweh shall scatter thee among all people, from the one end of the earth even unto the other. There thou shalt serve other gods, which neither thou nor thy fathers have known, even wood and stone. So we would have been scattered among these Eden nations because we didn't listen. You know, and what happens when a man, you know, is in a different nation. You know, and he sees a beautiful, attractive woman, you know, that he likes. You know, he's, he, he's going to try to fix her up, you know, he's going to try to lay down with her. And what happens eventually, you begin to get children. But we also understand that through numbers. Chapter one, verse eighteen. The man. The man determines, um, what nation, um, his children are from. This is Numbers chapter one, verse eighteen. And they assembled all the congregation together on the first day of the second month. And they declared their pedigrees after their families by the house of their fathers. According to the number of the names from twenty years old and upward by the poles. So when they, uh, basically brought the congregation together, this happened. You know, after their, after their names of their fathers, you know, the houses of their fathers. If you look at the twelve tribes of the nation of Israel, or you know, even the other nations. You know, you can see that their nation is established by the men. You know, Judah, you know, if you read the scriptures, is a man. Benjamin is a man, Levi is a man. You see, so those nations, you know, those tribes of the nation of Israel, they were, um. Determined after the lineage of the father. So you are what your father is. So in this day and age, you know, you, you might look like the other nations, or you might look like the so-called white man in Edomite. Having your lineage go back, um, to someone that looks like Esau. But if your lineage does, in fact, go back to Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, that makes you an Israelite. Even though you do not look, um, like a so-called Negro, Latino or Native American. You see, so going back to this, uh, this article. You know, this is a, a mother that's accusing the school board of teaching her daughter that she was born evil because she's white. Um, in this video, I want to go into how those people. You know, that actually go back to Esau Edom, the so-called white man upon the earth. They're in fact born evil indeed, you know. So it says, the Virginia school board at the center of a row over its gender affirmation policies. And alleged critical race theory curriculum has been accused by apparent of teaching primary schoolers that white people are born evil. This is the case. You know, later on in this lesson, I'm going into, um, certain atrocities that these, you know, Edomites committed upon this earth. You know, which the scripture also explains us that that's in their character. It's in the character to be evil, to be wicked. You know, that's who they are. That's who the Most High made them to be. You know, reading on, at a, at a, a Luddun county school board meeting last week. A mother revealed that she had pulled her children from the county's public school system. After her six-year-old daughter asked her last, asked her last year if she was born evil because she was a white person. The child had apparently learned this in a history lesson taught at her former school. Which is quite funny, but you know, it's the truth. You know, and we can see that, you know, Esau Edom is being exposed in this day and age. You know, the scriptures talk about that. You know, this is, um. Second Thessalonians, second chapter. If we read the title, it says, men of lawlessness, which means. A man that is not keeping the, the last thirty commandments of the heavenly father. You know, and if you don't keep the last thirty and commandments of Yahweh Bashem Yahweh Shai, you know, you're wicked. And it, it is within their nature not to keep the last thirty commandments of Yahweh Bashem Yahweh Shai. So it says, Second Thessalonians, chapter two, verse one. Now we beseech you brethren, by the coming of our Lord Yahweh Shai, and by our gathering together unto him. That ye be not soon shaken in mind, or be troubled neither by spirit nor by sword, nor by word. Nor by letter as from us, as that day of Yahweh Shai is at hand. So we shouldn't be, you know, shaken in the mind, um, have, have a mental instability, um, be shook up. You know, mentally or be afraid, have anxiety, you know, by the things that we receive through the spirit. You know, from, um, you know, the elder apostles on down, you know, in the epistles that they make, which are the videos. Or as we can read in the, in the scriptures themselves, certain good things that are going on. You know, because it says, as that day of Yahweh Shai is at hand. That no man deceive you by any means, for that day should not come. Except the coming of falling away first, and that men of sin be revealed, the son of perdition. So what it means to not be deceived by any means, you know, means that we shouldn't be deceived into following another doctrine or, you know, following. Basically following other doctrines, man. Because Esau Edom, you know, the so-called white man, he was created to deceive the whole earth. The true spirit Yahweh Bashem Yahweh Shai, you know, there are certain people, certain, um, certain people upon the earth. That are chosen not to fall for the deceit free that Esau Edom puts forth. You know, deceived by pastors, certain doctrines, certain religions. You see, basically you forsaking, um. You know, the truth of Yahweh Bashem Yahweh Shai, as had been, as has been taught, you know, by the elder apostles of GMS on down. You know, but it says, let no man deceive you by any means, for that day should not come. What days are talking about? It's talking about the second coming of Yahweh Shai. Except the coming of falling away first, and men of sin be revealed, the son of perdition. And that falling away first, um, pertains to us as a nation, losing our heritage, using, you know, the, the. The heritage that Yahweh Bashem Yahweh Shai has given to us as a nation. It says Jeremiah, chapter seven, seventeen, verse four. Even thou, even thyself, shall discontinue from an heritage that I gave thee. And it will cause thee to serve them enemies in the land which thou knowest not. We have cannot have fire in my anger, which shall burn forever. So because we, you know, angered Yahweh Bashem Yahweh Shai, you know, he took away our heritage from us. You know, he made us forget that we are the Israelites. Like I said, the so-called Negroes, Latinos and Native Americans. And those that are scattered among the Eden nations that might look like the Eden nations. But his lineage does go back to Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, according to their father's seed line, are the Israelites. But we will forget that we were the Israelites, you know, the most that would cause us to serve our enemies. You know, which the last captivity, you know, they were serving right now, is the captivity under Esau Edom, the so-called white man upon his earth. You see, and the anger of the Most High would, would be there for a very long time. Because right now, you know, in two thousand twenty-one, all the way starting up from nineteen seventy. You know, the Most High, you know, has raised up his service to prophets, you know, to bring back his people, you know, to bid the people to the marriage. That they may be, you know, deemed worthy for salvation, you know. So. Going back to Second Thessalonians, chapter two, verse three. You know, that falling away first, you know, happened, you know, after seventeen A.D. You know, when we, you know, uh, as a complete nation, you know, really had to, uh, uh. Well, basically, we as a whole nation lost our ways. You know, in seventy A.D., you know, during the siege of Jerusalem, you know, when, uh, the southern kingdom was still in, in. In Israel, you know, they had to flee the persecution of the Roman army, you know, under, uh, uh, under, um. Under Titus. You know, which hence also the art of Titus, you know, is, is, is created. You know, which you can see that they ransacked the temple of, you know, which was standing in Jerusalem. So our people that were still remaining in the land of Israel, they had to flee persecution. They went into Africa. Eventually, you know, they settled, you know, for the majority on the west coast of Africa. And after that, you know, they, they lost, you know, their heritage. You know, they lost who we are, you know, if you go to the Americas. You know, the, the native Indians, you know, they forgot, you know, that they were the Israelites. You know, the, 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 South America, you know, they forgot that they're the Israelites. But in this day and age, this information is being brought out. You know, at the same time that this information is being brought out who the Israelites are. You know, also that men of sin is revealed, the son of perdition, which speaks about Esau Edom, the so-called white man upon the earth. Second Thessalonians, chapter two, verse four. Who opposed it and exalted himself above all that is called the Most High, or that is worshiped. So that he as the Most High, sits in the temple of the Most High, showing himself that he is the Most High. And this is what they're doing, you know, uh. Correct, either this year or last year, I made a video, um, about a series called Biohackers. In which they tried to manipulate certain things to create new animals, creatures, um. There's a lot of information out there of people that are trying to, um, um, breed certain dogs. Um, with certain characteristics, you know, they're really trying to, um, you know, portray himself, you know, to be a power, to be a, to be a god. You know, that's what Esau Edom, the so-called white man upon the earth is doing, you know. Um, verse five, remember he not that when I was yet with you, I told you these things. And now you know what withholding that he might be revealed in his time. You see, because these things, um, even though during the Roman empire, you know, in which, um. Apostle Paul himself, you know, also was, uh, uh, living, you know, even though, you know, uh. The Edomites were ruling back then. You know, in this day and age, really being referred, uh, where Selachar revealed who Esau Edom is. You know, verse seven, for the mystery of iniquity doth already work, only he who now led it will let, until he be taken out of the way. So like I said, during that time, the Edomites were already in rulership. Their rulership started really off with the Grecians, you know, them taking over the, um, the identity as the Greeks. You know, and also the, uh, the Romans. After that, yet a thousand years of the Israelites, you know, being back into power, um, during the Byzantine empire. You know, in which the, uh, you know, the, 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 the so-called white people were, you know, basically pushed back, you know, into Europe. Um, and right now they're ruling again, you know, for a short period of time until the Most High really takes them out. You know, when Yahweh Shai comes back, you know, then the kingdom of Israel is going to be established upon its earth. Which is going to be ruled in, in righteousness, you know, because right now, you know, the wicked is in rulership. As it's also being referred to in Job, chapter nine. Job, chapter nine, four. Where it says, the earth is given into the hand of the wicked. He covered the faces of the judges the rough, if not where and who is he? So the Most High has given the earth into the hand of the wicked, which the wicked is Esau Edom, so-called white man upon the earth. They also portrayed himself, you know. Well, let me, let me rephrase it. They portray the Most High as their own image. They portray, um, Yahweh Shai as their own image, the angels as their own image. And they also cover up, you know, um, who the Israelites are by putting themselves out there. You know, it's just, as these, uh, uh, Israelis over there in the land of Israel, who are nothing but gutter rats. Basically store our identity, you know, but the earth right now is in their hands. You know, given them, uh, given unto them by the heavenly father. You see, uh, back in Second Thessalonians, chapter two, verse eight. And then shall the wicked be revealed in the Lord Yahweh, as Selachar whom the Lord shall consume with the spirit of his mouth. Shall they stroll with the brightness of his coming. Um, so before the second coming of Yahweh Shai, the son of perdition, you know. Son of perdition and the, uh, men of sin. Who is Esau Edom, the wicked shall be revealed. You know, whom the Lord shall consume with the spirit of his mouth, which is happening by his service of prophets, you know. We're revealing who he is, who are laying down, you know, the wickedness that he's committing and has committed. And shall they stroll with the brightness of his coming. Yeah, man, when Yahweh Shai comes back, you know, a lot of damage going to be done unto these Edomites. Verse nine, and it says, even him, whose coming is after the working of Satan. With all power and signs aligning wonders. So if you look at the word even in etymology, it goes back to the word namely. Which that word namely, if you look that up, goes to that is to say, which that is to say is a reference. So right now it says, it, it is referring to that is to say, him, referring to the wicked. Esau, that is basically, um, you know, the physical manifestation of Satan upon the earth. They're doing Satan's bidding, you know, on the left-hand side for the Most High. You see, and it says, with all power and signs and lying wonders. So they're liars, you see, showing all these things which are doing in wickedness, you know, using demons, witchcraft. You know, lying, lying is, is, is what they're very good at, you know, um. So let's look up. Let's see what we can find. We'll look up and see. It says. Satan, proper name of the supreme evil spirit in Christianity. So only by that, that first verse, which knowing that Satan is an evil spirit. You know, doing the bidding of the Most High on the left-hand side. Also having the understanding that Esau Edom is being used on the left-hand side. You know, doing the working of Satan, you know, we can. We can really say that these Edomites are evil by just going into the etymology of the word Satan. And, you know, Second Thessalonians two and eight and two and nine. You know, because they're evil. But what I want to do now is I want to show you that these people are in fact, you know. The so-called white people, people upon the earth, you know, I want to show you that Esau Edom, you know, is the so-called white man upon the earth. So this is Malachi, chapter one, verse four. Whereas Edom saith, we are impoverished, but we will build, we will return and build the desolate places. Thus said the Lord Yahweh of hosts, they shall build, but I will throw down. And they shall call them the border of wickedness, and the people against whom the Lord Yahweh had indignation forever. So Edom refers to Esau. This is Genesis, chapter thirty-six, verse one, and these are the generations of Esau who is Edom. So Edom is Esau, and they're being referred to as the border of wickedness, you know, um. Eventually, they were taken out of power, you know, they, they ruled as the Greeks, they ruled as the Romans, they were taken out of, you know, uh. Out of rulership, but eventually they came back during the revived Roman empire, which is the period of the Renaissance. Um, during that time, they really committed iconoclasm, which is the destruction of these images. You know, that if those images would have been left, you know, it would have been obvious that, you know, so-called Negroes would have ruled. During the thousand years of the Byzantine empire. You see, so they came back into power, but the Most High is eventually going to throw them down again. You see, but these people are being referred to as the border of wickedness. You see, and they're also the same people that the Most High has righteous anger for forever. So this is Genesis, chapter twenty-five, verse twenty-five, and this is the birth of, uh, Esau and Jacob. Um, but Jacob, he was described a little bit different than his brother, and that's with a reason. This is Genesis, chapter twenty-five, verse twenty-five, and the first came out red, all over like in hairy garment, and they called his name Esau. And after that came his brother out in his hand to hold in Esau's hue, and his name was Jacob. And Isaac was three square years old when she bear them. So here we can see that Jacob has not a, a, a different description unlike Esau. So what we can see is there's a comparison being made, you know, between Esau and. Um. Thirty-six and seven, correct. Thirty-five. Thirty-five and seven. Come, this is, um, Exodus, chapter thirty-five, verse seven, and ram skins dyed red and badger skins and shetumud. So there was comparison being made between the, 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 the skin pigmentation, you know, basically the skin color of Esau. And, and hairy garment that they used to dye, uh, red back in the days. Back in the days, they used to dye, you know, certain things in different colors, because it says. In verse six, going back to Exodus, chapter thirty-five, verse six, and blue and purple and scarlet and fine linen and goat's hair. Ram skins dyed red and badger skins and shetumud. During the time, you know, there were, uh, certain products with different colors. You know, but going back to Esau, his, his skin color was being compared. You know, to, to that red skin that was dyed red. If you go into the name Esau in the correct, uh, Hebrew, it says Ashashua, which means waste away as he is. The reason is waste away because he has no skin pigmentation, you know. Therefore you can see the, 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 the redness, you know, um, through his skin, because you can see the blood. Edom, if you look at the word Edom. It goes back to Adawan. Yeah, Adawan. Let me say, uh, yeah, Adawan, uh, which means red. Why? Because they are red all over, also because the aid of the red potage. Um, here it says, Edomite Idumian descendants of Esau. If. You go to Herod the. Herod the Great. Antipater Idumian. So Antipater, um, which was a, um. Which he was a, um, he was a Roman. You know, we know that these so-called white people, you know, proclaim, proclaim themselves to be the Romans, which in fact they were. Um, you know, they are the Idumians, which Idumian, you know, goes back to Edom. Which it says, Edomite Idumian descendants of Esau. You see, uh. It says, Antipater Idumian was the founder of the Herodian dynasty and father of Herod the Great. Which Herod the Great is the, um, um, the ruler that was, you know, that we could read about in, in, in the New Testament. According to Josephus, he was the son of Antipas, and had formerly held that name. A native of Edom, Saudis of Judah, between the Dead Sea and the Gulf Akaba, Akaba, Akaba. Which under the Romans came to be known as Idumia. Antipater became a power, powerful official under the later Hasmonean kings. And subsequently became a client of the Roman general Pompey the Great, Pompey confit Judah in the name of the Roman Republic. So. You know, also a little bit of in, information on how he converted, you know, um, to, you know, the Jews' religion, basically to. How you say that? The ways are ways, you know. Uh, it says, though historians understand that Antipater's family converted to Judaism in the second century BCE. Different stories are circulated in the wake of his son's coming to power. They demonstrate a tension that existed between the Jewish people and the power for Edomites who appeared at this time. Nicolaeus of Damascus, the court historian for Herod. Roaded Herod's ancestors were among the historian, historical elite in Jerusalem, who had been taken by King Nebuchadnezzar in Babylonian captivity. In the sixth BCE. This account serves two purposes. When the Persian king Cyrus sent the captives in Babylon back to Judea, it is lacking that some chose to settle elsewhere. Says, instead, Josephus explains that Antipater's family converted to Judaism during the forced conversion. By the sadistic influential Hasmonean leader John Hircanus. Which is during the time of the Maccabees. John Hircanus threatened that any Idumian who wished to maintain their land would need to be circumcised and entered into the tradition of Jews. Josephus acknowledges that Herod as being by birth a Jew. Uh, and Antipater as being of the same people with the Jews. Nevertheless, influential family came to be resentful by many Jews for their Edomite ancestry. A fact used by the Hasmoneans and their supporters against them. You see, so. You know, so he is, he is an Edomite, you know, so. Here it says, the name Edom means red in Hebrew, and was given to Esau, the eldest son of Heb, of the Hebrew patriarch. Isaac, once he ate red potage, which the Bible used in irony at the fact he was born red all over. You see, so you can see the redness, the blood through his skin. Which he, which those are these, you know, so-called white people who have their lineage go back to, um. Um, you know, Esau Edom. So. If we go a little bit back to the, um. To the article, well, it doesn't really go into any much more information over here, but, you know, they were born evil. Which the scriptures talk about it as well. This is Psalms, chapter fifty-eight, verse three. The wicked are estranged from the womb. They go astray as soon as they. They go astray as soon as they be born, speaking lies. So as soon as they be born, you know, they turn a different way. If you go into the word estranged, it's the Zawar. Zawar, and it says in the uh Hebrew childy lexicon, it says. To turn aside the part, followed by especially from the Most High, from the way of truth and uprightness. So as soon as they be born, you know, they start to do these wicked things, man. Cause it says they go astray as soon as they be born, speaking lies, so. As soon as they be born, wickedness is in their mind, man. You know, I I seen this video of this uh, of this girl, little girl. You know, and she she basically said that a so-called black man, you know, stole her cookies. The mom laughed, but she was lying because she ate the cookies. You know, uh, my nephew, you know, he he be doing all kind of wicked things. You know, already he uh, last week I heard that he broke into somewhere, you know? These people, the man. These people are nothing but wicked pieces of shit, they lie on your face, you know? Talking how good would you right in front of you, behind your back, they be talking about you, talking smack. You know? So. There's nothing good about an Edomite, man, Edomite is the physical manifestation of Satan upon his earth, man. You know, they're the devil, you know, in the flesh. This Psalms chapter fifty-five, twenty-one, the words of his mouth were smoother than butter, but war was in his heart. His words were softer than oil, yet where they draw a sword. You know, so they have a really, you know, uh. Nice way, smooth way of talking with people. But in their mind, and they are are already, you know, thinking about. Um, how they can can do certain things against you, man, um. So in their mind, they're already, you know, having a a a hatred towards you, you know? If you look at the uh, uh, when the uh, what is it, the uh conquistadors. You know, came to America, um, also when you had the uh, uh, the pilgrims or whatever they're called. You know, going to uh, North America, you know, having, you know, uh, the first contact with these uh. You know, with these Israelites, you know, that are, you know, being referred to as native Indians. You know, they came, they came with the Bible in their hand, but afterwards they killed them. You know, why? Because they're trying to find ways to really talk smooth with you. To be on your good side, but at the same time, you know, they're already thinking about how they're gonna gonna overcome you, kill you, do whatever. You know, they have in their mind, man. This is Proverbs chapter twenty-six, verse twenty-five, when he speak it fair, believe him not, for there are seven abominations in his heart. You see, so these people have a really good way of talking, but you shouldn't really trust them for what they're saying. You know, because they're nothing but wickedness, man. This is um, Surach, chapter twelve, starting in verse ten, never trust an enemy, first iron rusteth, so is his wickedness. And, you know, our number one enemy is Esau Eden, the so-called white men upon the earth, uh, but we also have other enemies. This Psalms, chapter eighty-three, verse one, keep down all silence, oh Yahweh, but not thy peace, and be not still, oh Yahweh. Followed in enemies make a tumult, and dated hate ye have lifted up the head. You know, our enemies basically come up against like Israelites, man, you know? These are Israelites, you know, and do something about them. Verse three, they have taken crafty counsel against thy people and consulted against thine hidden ones. So they're really trying to make plans, you know, to to take us down as a nation, you know, uh. Verse four, they have said, come and let us cut them off from being a nation, that the name of Israel may be no more in remembrance. You see, so they also help in, you know, forgetting, uh, making us forget who we were. You know, they gave us different names, you know, the 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 Hebrew names that we used to refer to as our s- uh, 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 back in the days, you know? Or or names that, you know, sounded similar to the Hebrew names, you know? They gave us different names, man, they gave us like these, these uh, modernized names, you know? They gave us the last names of the slave owners, you know, so they would, so we would, as a nation, would forget. You know, who we were, you know, because the people in the land of Israel right now are not the Israelites. You see? But through the spirit, yeah, through the spirit and power of Yahshua Shai and information is being brought out who we are, who we are. You know? Verse five, for they've consulted together with one consent, they are confederated against these, all these other nations. That I'm about to read, you know, are really coming together, you know, and really trying to come against us, to 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 take our nation down. You know, because these these hedons, they know what will happen once we come into power. And they are very comfortable right now with the position that they have, you see? So it says. Verse six, the tabernacles of Eden, which are the so-called white people po- people upon the earth. And the Ishmaelites, which are the so-called Arabs, Moab. Uh, which are the so-called Chinese people, and the Hagarines, which are Hamites. Gebal and Ammon, which Ammon are the Japanese people, and Amalek, which Amalek is the chief house, the nation of Esau. Uh, which those are the uh, people of Turkey. Uh, and also the people that are claiming themselves to be us, you know, claiming themselves to be the Israelites. The Philistines with inhabitants Tyri, which are also Hamites, as they're also joined with them, they've opened the children of Lot Salah. You see, so these, you know, are 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 our enemies, man, so. Speaking about Esau Eden, the so-called white men upon the earth as our main enemy, you know, because that's what this uh, video is going into. You know, how they are born evil. Hey, if you go back to Esau Eden, you're born evil. You're a fucking devil, you know? You shouldn't trust these people, that's what the Bible also talks about. This is Surach chapter twelve and verse eleven. Though he humble himself and go crouching, yet take good heed and beware of him. And thou shalt be unto him as if thou had wiped a looking-glass, and shalt know that his rust hath not been altogether wiped wiped away. So though these people try to humble themselves, you know, be nice to you, you know, flatter you, you know? Come in a very subtle, nice way, you gotta be aware of them, you know? Because the way that, you know, they had mirrors back in the day, they were made out of uh. Metal, you know, of iron and iron rusts. So if you're wiping a wiping a looking-glass, you know, you're trying to make it clean, you know, to see yourself in it. If you, if you start to look very good, you see that there's still wickedness there. That's the same with these people, even though they humble themselves and come in a certain way, they're still wicked. And what happens with the, with 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 the uh, 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 mirror that has not been uh wiped away? You know, uh, ha- ha- has not been wiped clean for a long time, the rust comes back. You know, same with these people. Verse twelve, set him not by thee, lest when he hath overthrown thee, he stand up in that place. Neither let him sit at thy right hand, lest he seek to take thy seat, and thou art the last to remember my words, and be preg'd therewith. You see, so you shouldn't really be dealing with these people, you know, because. Eventually, they're gonna try to take your place, try to take your seat, you know? And we as a nation, we we have a certain spirit within us, that we are very willing to forgive people that harmed us. You see, but we should really take heed, you know, to those people, but also to the scriptures. You know, because, but the Most High has written down, you know, through the man. You know, because the words written in the scriptures were through the inspiration of the heavenly Father, you know, and they're pure. You know, and 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 those things that we read are in fact true. This is really the case with these, with these so-called white people, you know, they cannot be trusted. You know, even though they come with good, good, nice words, eventually, it's nothing but wickedness, man. At my job as well, you know, I I I have a new job, still order picking, but right now I was with a rich truck. This, uh, I think it's a CEO or something, you know, he comes with these questions, smiling, being nice, saying things. But I know, man, this man, he's an Edomite, he's trying to humble himself, go crouching, because his wickedness is still there. You see, so don't trust these these people, man, and especially, you know, wha- what warned me even more. Is the fact in the cafeteria, you know, it looks like some kind of Freemason type of thing, man. Uh, the floor has a checkerboard, there is a goat hanging on one of the uh. One of the walls, you know, they have a, and it's very funny, man, they have a painting. They have a painting of Cain on the wall, of Cain and Abel. And we know through the spirit that, um, the spirit of Cain, you know, is reincarnated in the spirit of Esau, you know? So. Either I'm crazy, or there's some Freemason things going on over there. But if you have one plus one plus one equals three, hey, give it to the man. So, one thing that I wanna go into as well is the genocide of indigenous people. Um, it says the genocide of indigenous peoples is the mass destruction of entire communities of indigenous people. Indigenous peoples are understood to be people whose historical and current histor- history. At Slakka territory has become occupied by colonial expansion or the formation of a state by dominant groups such as colonial power. This talks about colonial expansion, also the scripture concerning that. Now I know why it loading, because internet's bugging up, Satan is trying to. So reading on, here it is, that will work. Too much information coming out of this, I didn't want. Patient says, while the concept of genocide was formulated by Raphael Lemkin in the tw- mid twentieth century. The expansion of various European colonial powers such as the British, the British are Edomite. And the Spanish empires, which are Edomite, and the subsequent establishments of colonies on indigenous territory. Frequently involved acts of genocide or violence against indigenous groups of the Americas, Australia, Africa and Asia. You know, who did that for the majority? The so-called white people did that, you know? Yeah, uh, 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 you know, the so-called white people, you know, the the, what is it, the French, uh. The English, the Spanish, the Dutch, you know, they were all, um, even the Portuguese. You know, all these Edomite, um. Countries, you know, were going to the Americas, north and south, in order to conquer. You know, and 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 expand their empire, you know? So it says. According to Lemkin, colonization was in itself intrinsically genocidal. He saw that this genocide as a two-stage process, the first being the destruction of indigenous people's way of life. In the second stage, the newcomers imposed a way of life on the indigenous group. According to David Mayberry Lewis, imperial and col- colonial forms of genocide are enacted in two main ways. Either through the deliberate clearing of territories of their original inhabitants. In order to make them exploitable for purpose of resource extraction or colonial settlements. Or through enlisting indigenous people as forced laborer, laborers in colonial or imperialist projects. Research as, resource extraction, the designation of specific events as genocidal is often controversial. So that's what these people be be doing, man, you know, they they have received the blessing, you know, their father Isaac. Um, and one of their blessings was the sword, you know, which, by which they raped, robbed and murdered. You know, conquered and colonized, you know, uh, you know, this earth basically. You know, and if we go here, we can see, you know, the col- the Spanish colonization of the Americas, the British colonization of the Americas. Things that happened in Canada, um, what happened in Mexico, southern Congo, United States. Uh, Africa and Asia, Congo is an example with Belgium. What Belgium did to the uh, to Congo. You know, British Empire pre, et cetera, et cetera, so. There's a lot of information out there on genocide of of indigenous peoples that the so-called white people. You know, are basically the uh. The author of. This is Genesis chapter twenty-seven, verse thirty-eight. And Isas in East Lake, and Esau said unto his father, is thou but one blessing my father. Bless me, even me also, oh my father, and Esau lifted up his voice and wept. You know, because if you reach chapter twenty-seven of Genesis, you know, we understand that Jacob, he supplanted. You know, Esau, you know, and his father to to receive the first blessing as the firstborn child. You know, even though Jacob was the second-born child, you know, through supplant- to through supplantation. Through supplanting, basically said, um, it was Jacob that received the first blessing, which is the blessing that we're gonna receive. You know, the blessing and the promises that we're gonna receive when Yahweh Shai comes back, you know, which means eternal life. Um, being on top of all these other nations, every spiritual powers, receiving the land of Canaan. You know, which the land of Israel is a lot of our inheritance, you know, which is um, uh. How you say that, which is located in the Fertile Crescent. You know, which that land used to flow with milk and honey, which mean, which means it was very fertile. And brought forth, you know, a lot of beautiful foods and things, you know? So that's the blessing that's later for us, which we basically supplanted Esau from. Um, so here Esau saying to his father, please give me also a blessing. You know, verse thirty-nine, Isaac's father answered and said unto him, behold, that dwelling shall be the fatness of the earth. Enough to do with heaven from above, and by thy sword shalt thou live, and shalt serve thy brother, and should come to pass when thou shalt have the dominion. Thou shalt break his yoke from up thy neck. So in verse forty, we understand that he would live by the sword. Verse thirty-nine, we understand that he will be uh, in rulership for a certain period of time. Uh, and would have all the riches of the earth, you know, into his possession, which is the period that they're, that that we're in right now. But the way that they acquired all these things was by the blessing of the sword. You know, they raped, robbed and murdered all the countries that they invaded to expand their territory, you see? And. Since Satan is messing, um, with the internet on. On my laptop. The phone. This is Mic at two and two, and they covered fields and take them by violence and houses and take them away. So they oppress a man on his house, even a man and his heritage, that's what they do, man, they covered fields, you know, they covered, you know, uh, lands. You know, and they take it by finance by means of the sword, you know? So this is Habakkuk two and five, ye also because he transgressed by wine. Uh, let me start at verse four. Habakkuk two and four, behold, his soul which is lifted up is not upright in him, but it just shall live by faith. So the soul, the spirit which is in Esau Eden is not upright, you know, it's 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 wicked, it's upside, it's 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 turned upside down. You know, it's contrary to, you know, the way that the Most High actually created the Israelites. Israelites were created to be the righteous, you know, and and Esau Eden, he is really created to be the wicked upon the earth. You know, verse five, ye also because he transgressed by wine, is a proud man. Now to keep it at home, who enlarged his desire as hell, and is death, and cannot be satisfied. But gathered unto him all nations, and he put unto him all people, so he's transgressing by his philosophies, you know? He's very proud, and he doesn't stay at home, what does he do? He colonizes, he goes to different places. He tries to conquer his land, who enlarge it to his desire as hell, and is death, and cannot be satisfied. There's no set, there there's no way that these people can be satisfied, man, you know, just like, uh, the grave, you know? It cannot be satisfied by the amount of people that die, you know? Just like that is their desire concerning. Concerning these things, man. It says, per section, not all these take a parable against him and atoning proverb against him and say woe to him that increase that which is not his. You see, they covet his lands, you know, and to him to lay himself with tecklay, because. If you look at the word tecklay, it actually goes into depth. If you look at America, um, they have a, they have a huge debt, a huge financial debt. You know? Um, this is Revelation, chapter six, verse four, and they went out another horse. Let me start at verse three. The second sioux war, when he had opened the second sioux, I heard the second beast say, come and see. And there went out another horse that was red, Esau Edom, he might ride all over. And Paul was given him that set the runt to take peace from the earth. And that they should kill one another, and they was given him, unto him a great sword. So Esau Edom has been given the power to take the peace from the earth, how? Rape, rob, murder. And that, uh, great sword that was given unto him, you know, was his blessing, you know? So indeed, yes, if you are so-called white. Your lineage does go back to Esau Edom, the so-called white men upon the earth, then you are born evil. History, history clearly explains us that. The Bible, you know, doesn't need no secular history, you know, to be proven correct. But as we just found out. Whatever the Bible stated about these people, you know, secular history backs it up, you see? So, there it is, that is less was edifying, and with that. I wanna give all praise on the glory to Yahweh, Bahsham, Yahweh Shai, Bahsham Rakaqadash. The honors to the all the apostles of great millstone, who teach and rule well. And Shalawam to the sincere, accountable, sprained truth and sincerity.